Salutations.
Welcome everyone to the Kent City Council Workshop. Today is Tuesday, January 19th, 2021. This is a remote meeting due to the COVID-19 health and safety requirements in order of the governor. And I'd like to welcome anyone that is joining us today on Kent TV 21, the Facebook City of Kent Channel, YouTube, or anyone that's dialing in this evening. So, welcome. We have several things on the agenda today, so let's go ahead and get started with item number one, which is a communications update from Bailey Stover.
Good evening, Council President Troutner, council members. You all look fantastic with your new backgrounds, except for Councilmember Voice, who didn't get the email, I'm guessing. But I will help you get that set up, Bill. And I have to say, I know Xandria is disappointed she doesn't have her beautiful parks in the background, but I will find a way to make it up to you. So, I'm excited to be here with you all tonight. Thought I'd provide you guys with a 2020 year in review, kind of look back, and then I look forward to our 2021 communication strategy and what we're doing. So, can I get the next slide, Kim? One more, please. All right, so I can't believe it's already been a year. If you think back, right on the cusp of pre-COVID, we had the 2020 State of the City address. And our State of the City this last year was important for a couple of reasons. First of all, it was the first State of the City address that we've ever taken into a private business. We had a great partner in Blue Origin, as you guys know, because you attended. But it was a great event. It was the first time Blue Origin ever let members of the public in their facility without going through background checks and all of those crazy hoops and measures to jump through. But we thought it was important that we show off our economic development team and some of the great things they've been able to bring to Kent. And Blue Origin really is a pillar for us. And so, it was a treat to be able to do the State of the City there. It's also important because it had a historic attendance record for a State of the City address. Over 300 residents attended the mayor's State of the City, which is a first. And so, it's another way of bringing government into the community and having the community meet us there and really, really be a part of the process and have a cool experience and some takeaways. And so, it was a really great event. So, I wanted to kick us off by reminding us of pre-COVID days. Look at all those beautiful places without masks on in the audience. Those were the good old days. Next slide, please. So, then COVID hit, and we had to get underway with our COVID campaign. So, we did a lot of messaging around COVID. In the, I remember in the preliminary months, the early months of COVID, it was still very new. Masks were not required. People were still trying to figure out what was happening with this, what would later become a global pandemic. And so, we really started trying to push a human message with our COVID campaign, talking about the human side of things. We wear our masks because we are empathetic. We wear our masks because we care about our neighbors. We wear our masks because we're responsible. We were able to put some of those resources into our top five languages. We launched our COVID-19 website that the city has kept up to date weekly. COVID's changed a lot. There's been a lot of different CDC guidelines and state guidelines, so we've been managing those weekly. One of the things we're really proud of is we did over, we did 10 pop-up events throughout the city, geographically dispersed. So, we had some on the West Hill, some in the Valley, some up in Panther Lake, and then some on the East Hill, where our team was able to give out 44,000 masks to Kent residents and over 20,000 hand sanitizers. The feedback we've gotten from the masks have been phenomenal. We've, my favorite quote is, "I'm unsure how a city turned masks into a collector's item, but I'm here for it." And that's really what we did through the theme of our masks. And we tried to make it a fun thing, so residents would be encouraged to wear them and help slow the spread of COVID, which we know was hitting South King County really hard. As you can see, our residents, hey, Kim, I don't know if you can click. If you click that left box, that left picture, it'll actually scroll through if you click that. So, residents would regularly submit pictures of themselves wearing our Kent masks, posting them on social media. They were really proud and excited of those masks. And then, of course, that beautiful photo in the middle of all of our council members with their Kent mask on really helped us kick off the campaign. And then, as you see from the right photo, the lines have been insane for these events. When we did the first Showware event, the line actually zigzagged through the Showware parking lot six times, went out to James Street, and then from James, it went all the way back to Central Avenue, where people were still waiting in line to get their masks. So, it's been a really great, really great turnout. Next slide, please. Through our work on the COVID campaign, we actually reached 300,000 individual, unique people. And our ads were viewed 1.25 million times, which is the largest ad campaign the City of Kent has ever run with over 1 million ad views that ran through December. Our ads talked about testing locations of where you could get tested, public health best practices of what to do, what not to do during COVID, and a lot of links to resources. So, the city, we realized early on, we didn't have a lot of resources that the federal government or state government had in terms of programs or money. And so, we felt our best role would be a connector. Let's connect our residents to those resources, to some of the programs and services out there, and really help get them connected to services. Through the campaign, we sent six mailers across the city. Again, they had our top five language resources on them. We had 10 eight-foot-by-four-foot road signs that were displayed throughout the city. And then, we had two digital billboards. And I will tell you, I forgot we were doing the digital billboards. I had authorized it, said, "Yes, let's do it." And I was driving down Central Avenue, and the entire city council's face popped up in the middle of the night on this billboard. And it felt like you guys were stalking me a little bit, but it was a really great reminder that we needed to have our masks on. We needed to mask up. And it was a really good, it was a really good campaign. It's been really well received by our residents. You can also see on the bottom, we've done a ton of just physical signage. Wearing a mask shows you care for the people around you. You'll see those signs around City Hall campus if you come, reminding our employees that are here on campus, we need to have masks on. We've had to do a ton of signage on elevators and facility doors, things like that. Next slide, please. So, again, here's a little bit more of the mask designs you'll see. Those were what some of our pop-up tents looked like. That was the actual chicken nugget event. I have to give a kudos to our local infamous McChevron up on the East Hill. McChevron found out that we were doing a chicken nugget map, and they actually partnered with us. And they gave us over 1,000 coupons for free chicken nuggets. And so, we were able to put those coupons in the mask bags and give out nugget coupons to our community. No purchase required, just come up to McChevron and get some free nuggets with your nugget mask. And so, that was a really cool community partnership we were able to do. And then, of course, the bottom corner is just collateral and lit pieces that we were able to put out. We rotated between the mayor being on some of our mail pieces, as well as our council members. That one on the bottom, it's kind of hard to see, it's small. It's Councilmember Micho, Larmer, Cor, and Fincher on that mail piece there that went out to the community. And I've got copies of all those collateral. I was going to start sticking them in council members' mailboxes if you haven't had a chance to see them yet. It's kind of, it's kind of fun to see your face come in the mail. And it's not coming on a bill, so that's a good thing. It's just coming on a community resource. Next slide, please. The other big project we launched, which kind of got overshadowed during COVID, is Kent Works. So, Kent Works is our mobile application, which allows our residents to submit service requests or ask questions of city staff through a mobile application. So far, in the several months that we didn't get this thing going till late September, we've had over 1,030 requests that have come in that we've already solved their problem. We've already fixed what they've requested, which is a ton. If you think about an application that didn't launch until third quarter, to have already 1,000 service requests come in and fulfill those requests has been great. We've moved off of some of our older systems. We've streamlined our systems into Kent Works. The mayor's office is the actual owner of this application, so we coordinate with the Parks Department and Public Works and other departments to make sure that their frequently asked questions and services are linked in this application and that our residents are getting what they need. We've gotten a ton of great feedback from residents about how easy the application is to use. If you don't have it yet, I'd suggest downloading Kent Works. It's in the Android Store and, or the Google Play Store and the Apple Store. You're able to report graffiti, vandalism, fences down, potholes. And most of the time, we have our crews out there within one business day fixing the, fixing the issue that you requested. And we're always looking for ways to make it better. In fact, today at 1:00, I had a conference call with our teams. Our most frequently, our most frequent users to ask them, "What's great about the app? What are some speed bumps in the app that we can get fixed out?" And we're constantly asking the cities around us who use the app, Auburn's on it, C-Tax on it. "What are things that we should look out for? What are things we can pre-program to make it even better for our residents?" Next slide, please. So, Kent 101. Again, that seems like it was a million years ago. We launched our first Kent 101 civics class. We had 30 participants go through the class. It was in-person. They came, they heard from all of our departments about the city services and programs that we offer. They were able to meet department directors and ask questions, and it was a really successful program. We took a pause because of the COVID. We didn't want to try to bring 30 members of the public back into council chambers. That was not going to be an option. And we re-envisioned how we do it. And I'm excited to say, we notified today 50 residents, instead of the previous 30, 50, that we've moved into a digital format. So, we're going to be able to offer the same service, same education course for 50 of our residents. We're going to do two classes this year, so we hope to get at least 100 residents through. But that's not even the best part. The best part is, for our 50 spots, we had 136 applicants. So, we had 136 residents say, "I want to know more about my city government. I want to be a connector between my city government, my neighborhood, my friends and family." And that's an exciting thing for us. We're very excited the mayor launched this initiative, and we're gonna, we're gonna keep, keep plugging away at it. So, they got their notifications today that they're in. And then, it will start at the beginning of February, first Wednesday in February, and it'll run every Wednesday for eight weeks. Next slide, please. 2020 Census, again, another thing that feels like it was a long time ago, but it really wasn't. And it's something that really makes a difference for the city. So, we actually hired two part-time bilingual census workers to come work on my team and for the city. And they were able to go into neighborhoods that are historically underrepresented in the census and encourage them to fill out their census. They had iPads, so they would go right to your door and help you fill out the census right then and there. We also did mobile pop-up events through the city. So, we did, one of my favorite events we did was, we had a taco truck pull into one of our disadvantaged, underserved, undercounted neighborhoods, and we offered free tacos if you'd come do the census. And it was a, it was a very popular event. We had a ton of people come. You can literally see the mayor standing there, passing out tacos to a car that had pulled up. And we got a ton of response. And so, you'll see, the state response rate was 72.4. The City of Kent was a little bit ahead of that at 72.7. We increased, we increased our number over the last census count that we did as far as self-response in the city. And I'm happy to say, we were one of the highest cities with highest turnout in South King County because of our work. And again, through that, we ran multiple events. We did paid digital ads. We did direct mail postcards. If there was neighborhoods that were underrepresented in the census, I started hitting them with postcards and, again, our top five languages, but repeated postcards, robo-calls. We sent our teams to knock on their doors. For us, it was really important to make sure that we counted, so we could get our fair share of federal funding to help support our programs here in Kent. Next slide, please. So, again, we had to do a ton of adaption to our programs and services. The first thing we did is we had to get all of our amazing council members virtual, right? So, on the bottom-left corner there, you'll see some very beautiful, familiar faces. And, you know, that was, that was a transition, as you guys are very well aware. Instead of coming into council chambers, we had to get everyone virtual, which we're still sorting out the kinks, AKA, us just now rolling out our backgrounds, right, for council. So, it's still a work in progress. We're still learning as we go, but we're excited to have it virtual. I'd also point out that this is the first year that we've transitioned to broadcasting our council meetings on Facebook. So many of our residents and users are on Facebook, and this was one more step we could take to make their city council accessible and available to them. So, we're excited that you're now in a virtual format, and we're able to spread that a little bit further. We also had to transition our events, things like Coffee with the Chief, Coffee with the Mayor, Town Halls that the mayor would typically hold. We had to transition those virtually and figure out how to maneuver that. And then, we actually got to do some really, some really cool feel-good events that were a highlight, I'll say, during our COVID experience. The picture on the bottom right, we got a letter from a resident who lives in an assisted-living facility. And they had talked about how some of their neighbors were commenting and mentioning they didn't care if they lived to their next holiday, because they didn't get to see their friends and family. They didn't get to see their family for Thanksgiving or Christmas. They didn't get to feel that connectedness as a senior. They didn't get to see the high school graduations and their family. And they just felt really disconnected from the community. And it was causing depression, and our seniors are feeling isolated during COVID, and it's hitting them hard. And so, we were actually able, when the mayor got that letter, she said, "We've got to do something." And we got this great idea in the mayor's office that we were going to do a little parade. And we got Puget Sound Fire to partner with us, the chief partnered with us, and Kent PD partnered with us, and the mayor as well. And we went on a little parade through all the senior facilities. We contacted them all and asked them if they'd like us to stop by. And we went through, and we brought them all very cool City of Kent masks and hand sanitizers. And we brought them all cards that were signed by a bunch of city employees, saying, "We're thinking about you. We care about you. We haven't forgotten about you." It was a beautiful event to see. I will tell you the most heartbreaking thing, as I have a picture of the mayor waving through the glass window at our senior residents waving back, because they couldn't actually come out and interact. And it was, it was fulfilling, heartbreaking all at the same time. But again, it was something that we were able to do to show our community that we're still connected with you and we still care. Next slide, please. So, as you guys know, we've talked about this once before, but we also, last year in 2020, did a team reorganization. We had a very decentralized communications model. And we're mostly centralized now. Our multimedia team was actually part of IT and was not part of administration, communications. And we just kind of had this conglomerate of people all over the place in different city departments, all working on the same city functions. So, you'll see our current structure now. And then, we've got two communications coordinators, Josh Mossberg and Tracy Padilla, who split up departments. So, Mossberg is covering Public Works and Finance and IT. And then, you've got Tracy, who's covering the Police Department, Courts, Law, and HR. And then, the two decentralized pieces that we still have, you'll see on the bottom-right corner, is Haley, who's up in Parks. She does more than communication. She does the communications and their marketing. And then, we have Michelle over in Economic and Community Development, who also fills a dual role. While she helps oversee and steer their communication, she's also a special projects person for ECD. So, she's helping them with a variety of recruitment and retention strategies and products there. But we do consider them part of our comms team, because they're our go-to in those two decentralized departments. Next slide, please. So, Race and Equity. When we first started this conversation around race and equity, it was very much part of administration and very much part of the Communications Division. So, it was our division that helped secure Erin Jones as our Equity Consultant to come into the city and offer that first round of training to directors and managers and supervisors. I sat on all of those calls. I ended up doing the training twice. I did it once with the ELT and directors, and then again with the managers, because I took attendance at every class to make sure all of our managers had gone through it. We really worked with the mayor and Derek to try and visualize and support a race and equity manager position. As you guys funded in the budget, what would that look like? We helped in the preliminary stages of that. And we helped support a race and equity employee resource group, which is now up and running amongst our employee groups. And we're really excited about that. Now that council's funded that race and equity manager position, and Yuri's in position, it has all shifted over to him, and it's no longer necessarily our responsibility. But we are really looking forward to supporting him and his work and finding ways that we can make sure those resources, information, it's not only getting out internally, but externally as well. Next slide, please. So, Positive Earn Media, you know, it's one of the things that I am probably most proud of in 2020. We had to think outside the box to generate good stories for Kent. We had a lot of really big things happen in Kent. The county quarantine facility, as you all are aware, when they came to Kent, that was probably the biggest media storm, I think, I've ever been a part of. And it was right in the middle of the mayor delivering her State of the City remarks in 2020. She was in everything. The mayor, we had her featured in everything from Esquire Magazine to Vogue, to the New York Times, Washington Post, Dallas Morning News, LA Times. She was actually on the cover of CNN Peru for over a week. We were an international story about isolation quarantine facilities, because we were one of the first in the world, right here in Kent. And that required a lot of media and telling our side of the story and what we thought was important as far as communication goes between the county and city and residents. So, it was a huge media event. We had our face mask and food distribution media coverage. The Luna Rover got its state historic landmark, which was pretty cool. First time I've ever been interviewed by Space Magazine. Didn't know that was a thing. Learned it here in Kent. Our, the county's climate action plan. They could have announced that in 39 cities. They picked Kent to announce it in. We got a lot of good coverage out of that for, for King County. Community development grants, the small business grants that council and the mayor were able to secure for our small businesses, $2 million. Got a ton of good press. You'll see, we're actually doing a Facebook series right now of some of the businesses that receive those grants. So, we'll continue to generate some good press out of that. Drinks with Daniels. Chris Daniels from King Five, he picked five mayors in the state to go have a beverage with and talk about their city and their vision for their city. Five cities out of the entire state, and he picked Kent. And we were really honored to be part of that, to be part of that. And then, the media we got around Kent Works. So, again, we, we actually generated over 100 positive media stories for the City of Kent this year. We've done our research. I'm willing to stand by this. It's the most positive news stories ever generated in the City of Kent in one calendar year. And so, my team's pretty excited about that. We're feeling pretty good. We've talked a lot about making sure Kent has their marker in the region. We tell our positive story, and we, we show people that Kent's an awesome place. And 100 news stories, it gets us a long way in that regard. We've got plenty of work left to do to continue to tell our story, but we're excited for that challenge. Next slide, please. So, our video highlights in 2020, we did, like I mentioned, we got a lot of our live streams up and going, a lot of our broadcasts up and going that we previously didn't have to do. Did a lot of COVID press events. We turned the mayor's, the mayor's weekly newsletter into a video newsletter that you'll see come out on Fridays. We did a really cool brighter days ahead video for our residents, talking about together, if we partner, we can stop the spread of COVID, and we can get out of this, and we can support our businesses and see light at the end of the tunnel. We started an In the Work series to talk about the cool projects Public Works is doing regularly. We've talked about the 228th Street Bridge and Corridor down there with 224th. We've talked about Fourth and Willis. We're really starting to showcase the work that's being done behind the scenes in Public Works. Again, State of the City, first time we were able to livestream that live on Facebook and our social platforms. Done a ton of the mask up. This was the first year we took our holiday tree lighting virtual. And it's also probably the biggest attendance we've had in the past several years. Our residents enjoyed still being able to participate in something that had a little bit of holiday cheer and wasn't necessarily doom and gloom. And then, have to give a shout-out to Julie and her team with Parks. You know, one of the things we were really worried about was, we've got all these younger folks, and actually, folks of all age, that are involved in our recreation programs. And now with COVID, we're saying, "All right, everyone, go home." What are these folks doing to release some of this energy? I know a lot of the parents who have adapted to homeschooling were like, "Okay, we need PE time. Please go outside, get away from mom and dad for a minute," right? But we turned, with obviously, the leadership of the Parks Department, we did Parks at Home videos. And it was everything from science experiments kids could do at home to recreation and football and all sorts of outdoor activities kids could do at home to burn off some of that steam, but really keep our community active. But it's our, it's not just keeping them active, it's the city keeping them active. It's the city still stepping up and providing these services and resources for our community right in their own backyard. So, we were very excited about that. And it wouldn't have been done without the park staff and fabulous leadership we have in Parks. Next slide, please. So, Print Shop Highlights. So, we got Ivanti, which has rolled out in 2020, is our new digital ticketing system for multimedia jobs. So, now, instead of just sending an email that says, "Hey, Bailey, we want to do this cool project", you actually submit a ticket, and it goes through, and it allows us to track our workflow, and it allows us to create some metrics to see how we're, how we're succeeding as a multimedia division. So, we had 1,020 total service requests, which was 541 graphic design jobs, 281 print shop jobs fulfilled, and 198 video and event coverage jobs. So, every other day, our video crew was out actually having to film something, basically. And as far as our machines go, we had 686,000 color copies that we had to run off. And additionally, 858,000 black and white. And the thing to note, it's kind of interesting about color and the copies, but color copy specifically, it's 250,000 more than what we had in 2019, because we're mailing a lot more. We're sending a lot more to residents, since we don't have in-person services. So, just kind of a fun fact there. And we put out roughly 245,000 pieces of mail this last year, which is a lot. So, next slide, please. Some of our design highlights, all of our COVID signs that hit city facilities, our mail pieces, the inserts that go in utility bills. We produced a winter weather plan, which looks way better than anything we've ever produced thus far. And we're also able to digitize that and put it on our website, so our residents know how we respond to winter weather events. The mayor's proposed budget book had to be produced this year. We got a beautiful 2021 legislative priorities and SST animation done to explain to our legislators what streamline sales taxes and how it impacts Kent. The legislative fact sheets for Public Works and Economic Development Teams. And we've incorporated translations into our design, which we're going to expand upon a little bit more in the 2021 work plan and look ahead. So, I'll talk about that more in a minute. Next slide, please. Department Promotions. So, Court, we had one of the first municipal courts in the state to reopen after COVID, which meant we had to go do physical walkthroughs of the court to figure out the signage. We had to figure out six feet. We had to figure out six feet, what six feet in line looked like. We had to do the physical markers on the ground of the six feet in line. But we had to do all the signage in the court to show people what lines were what, how we could proceed. We had to separate jurors, right? And put special markers on the seating for jurors and do all their signage for instructions. Over in ECD, we had the Small Business Grant Program. So we did all the signage and promotion on that. They also launched a really cool tool this year, which we helped them promote, which was BuildKentWah.com. If you haven't had a chance yet, please check that out. You can go to BuildKentWah.com on any computer or mobile device and see what's being built in your neighborhood. Instead of those big, huge yellow signs that say, you know, permit soon, you don't have to get out of the car and go stand on the street corner in the rain and read them. You go to this lovely website and it will tell you what's going on in your neighborhood. We get a ton of residents that reach out to us on social media and say, what is this? What is this going up here? What is this going up here? This is a great resource. The Kent Housing Options Plan came out of ECD and we've had just a ton of positive good news stories out of ECD. Obviously, the old Kmart site, we're very excited about, that's going to generate some positive press. But they've done a lot of great work in ECD this past year despite COVID. Finance, we put together the budget book. We've worked with them on their utility billing assistance program and business licensing, redone their forms for them and done a lot of mailing for them. Human Resources had a massive project this year in the launch of Workday. Getting that up and running at the end of 2020 required a lot of internal communications, a lot of internal training, a lot of production of internal materials. Over in IT, their Communicate templates, we designed that for them. So they have a clear channel for internal communications to let folks know what's going on. If a system is down or a server is down or a program is down, they can let them know quickly. Redid all of their division logos for them and worked on their cybersecurity logos and programs. Parks, again, Parks at Home was a huge success, really proud of the Parks team. Also, we had to redo all their signage. As you followed along through COVID with the Governor, parks were open, then parks were closed. Then play structures were closed, but the park could be open if it were green space. Then trails could be open, but the green space couldn't be open, but the structure was closed. So just constantly changing their signage for them and making sure it was deployed in all of our parks was was a never ending saga that we finally made it through. And also helping them with their spotlight series, turning that digital and promoting that as well. Over in the Police Department, we got beautiful PD calendars out. If you all don't have one for 2021, you let me know and I will mail you one. They are beautiful and fantastic. Here we go. Oh, you can't see it with my background. Well, okay, that's weird. There's a zebra on the front of it. It's great. They're great. If you don't have one, please let me know. I'll make sure you get one. We also supported and promoted Shop With A Cop this year, which we did in a very different format of having to take small groups of kids through Target. Can't take 50 kids during a pandemic into a store and tell them to go shopping. We worked on the Kent PD Way with the Chief. I think that was a really important document that talked about some of the training and things. As we looked at equity and social justice in our Police Department, we helped them create that webpage and the collateral materials that they handed out. And then we've been doing different social series with the Police Department, including our Top Cop series and others. And then in Public Works, like I talked about, the In the Works videos were very important, showing kind of the backend of some of these projects. Residents have a lot of questions. They always see construction. This was our chance to kind of explain to them what's going on throughout the city. We've done a ton of public outreach plans. Josh Mossberg on my team has been instrumental in helping with advertising and soliciting resident feedback on the Transportation Master Plan as well. So done a ton of work in Public Works this past year. Next slide, please. So now we're moving into 2021. I'm going to talk quickly. We've got a lot going on. So we're getting ready for the State of the City, believe it or not, it is that time again. If anyone, you know, wants to delay it, that would be great by me. But we're, it's coming up very quickly. So it's going to be an all virtual livestreamed event this year, obviously following COVID restrictions. It's going to be a walking speech. The Mayor is going to be walking through businesses and programs and places in the city that she's proud of that have that have made a difference in Kent. So some of the businesses that we have partnered with that are going to be featured in the 2021 State of the City are listed here. I won't go through them all, but the Mayor will be going on walks through these businesses and talking about economic development and job creation and what that looks like and means for the City of Kent. She'll also be visiting some of the major projects that have happened in Kent. She'll be visiting the Fourth and Willis Roundabout, for example, and talking about how that's going to help improve our city. And she'll of course be talking about the programs that our residents and businesses have come to count on. Next slide, please. We have, for the first time since 2015, a formalized communications plan. And I know Marley's going to nerd out on this with me. It is not 100% done, but it is 98% done, Marley, Councilmember Lmer. It is about 75 pages where we're at right now. And I'll say there's probably about 10 more to go. But it's the first time since 2015, the city has actually had a formalized communications plan and communication strategy. We are really excited about it. It's going to be our pathway and our guidebook for the next two years. And then we want to go back and just make edits every couple of years, just to make sure that it's fresh and still relevant. Like I said, a living document. And one of the key pieces that I think is important is it'll be the first communications plan ever that calls for and mandates translation of our most frequently used documents and programs and mail and things that we put out. It's important, you know, we love to brag about, talk about 10th most diverse city in the United States. Well, we have to back that up with some actual collateral for all of our residents. So we're really excited about that and I'm really excited to share that when it's done. Like I said, we're 90% of the way done, but it'll be completed soon. Next slide, please. So expanding our online services, we're really excited. We're going to be doing the refresh and rebuilding of KentWah.gov this year. It was in the IT work plan, Council allocated the money in the last budget for the CMS refresh. So we're very excited to get that going. And then of course, we're going to continue to improve Kent Works. It's the app that we rolled out in September. Anytime you roll out a new app, there's always room for improvement. There's always glitches. There's always things to work out. So we're excited to continue those. Next slide, please. The Neighborhood Program, there's Councilmember Fincher hanging out with a couple of our residents from the Neighborhood Council Program. We really want to, we paused it during this year. I won't say paused it as in we haven't provided support, but we've paused it because they're not doing in-person meetings. So we can't go out to neighborhood councils and meet with them in person like we used to. So I've really challenged our team to re-envision our neighborhood programs. What does it look like to have a vibrant neighborhood program in a city? So right now, we're going back to the drawing board. We're doing some research of what other cities around us are doing. But I've also asked them to look at national best practices to figure out what cities across the country are doing to create not only a vibrant neighborhood program, but a sustainable neighborhood program. Does it make sense to have 50 recognized neighborhood councils in the city when only a handful of them are meeting? Or does it make sense to have five regional councils spread out through the city? For example, which is the City of Seattle model, which is a more regular meeting Regional Neighborhood Council Program. It's something that I think we should look at. I don't think there's a right answer, a wrong answer. And I think it's something we need to engage with the existing neighborhood council programs to see what their thoughts are as far as what we're doing now and how we can make improvements. And I think it's something that we need to look at national and regional best practice to make sure that we're in line. We still have the Neighborhood Council Grant Program, which is up and running. Neighborhoods have still applied for grants this past year to do beautification improvement projects in their neighborhood. We've still issued those grants in support of the neighborhood councils that are functioning and existing today. So that work still continues. We're just looking, how can we make it even bigger and better going into 2021? And how do we support them during a COVID era? Next slide, please. Boards and Commissions. So this is something we were working on and then Council also said it was important and it was perfect timing because it was like two, two good things colliding at once. So we are actually, I was inspired by the City of Auburn. In all of the illustrious free time I have, I sit on the Auburn Parks Board. And one of the things we get over in Auburn is we get a weekly recap from administration over in Auburn about all the things that are happening in the city and how board and commission members can support the things that are happening. For example, budget considerations are going on. How do boards and commissions feel about this? Community events that are happening, please come, please attend this community event. All those things in a recap email. So what I've asked my team to do is, I don't know that we have the capacity to do it weekly, but I've asked us to put together a monthly recap and look forward about all of the events happening in the city, whether city sponsored or events we know about. All of the things, you know, the Council's working on, the Mayor's office is working on. Very similar to what you guys get in your CIO report of all the things happening throughout the city internally and externally. And I've asked us to start putting that out to boards and commission members. So they know what's going on in the city, how they can help us. I think we've really missed an opportunity. These folks are great liaisons between the city and their neighborhoods and communities. Let's empower them with information and tools so they can actually be a liaison to their communities and go back and talk about what's happening at the city and what's happening with their boards and commissions. So that is going to start, I believe, this month. If not this month, it'll be beginning of next month to start really empowering them with information. And again, forward facing roundup with messaging opportunities and guidance for things that people want to share things, for example. So yeah, next slide, please. So we've got a bunch of new social series coming this year. I'm very excited about some of these. We are launching a Cuisines of Kent series. So once a week, we're going to be posting about a restaurant or a special dish that you can find in Kent. I'm very excited about a lot of our ethnic based restaurants and businesses here in Kent have world-class cuisine that a lot of folks don't even know about here in the city. So we're going to be taking, we've actually reached out to 30 restaurants so far. We're going in, taking pictures of their cuisine, doing a write-up about it, maybe a little blurb about the chef or how it's prepared. And those will start hitting our social platforms soon as well. We're also launching a social series called The People of Kent, picking random people in the community and telling their story. We have so many people from around the world. We want to tell their stories, what brought them to Kent, why they choose to call Kent home and start really talking about the diversity here in Kent and the people that choose to call Kent home. We have a fun series coming called Kententainment. I wanted to call it Sunday Fun Day. Nobody else wanted to call it Sunday Fun Day. We're with Kententainment. But I want to start talking about some of the things to do in Kent, right? For example, I would be shocked if all seven Councilmembers knew that we had a disc golf course up at Lake Fenwick Park, right? That is a free, it is a free thing our community can do. They can go learn a sport. It's free. It's at a park. It's a resource. And it's something we should talk about. And we've got a lot of those hidden gems in the community. So my team's been going out, we've been taking pictures, we've been taking videos of these things. We've been talking to residents about them and we're putting together a whole series of things you and your family can do here in Kent on the weekend. Hence why I wanted to call it Sunday Fun Day. I got vetoed on that. Kententainment it is, but I'm excited to show residents there are fun things that are free or low dollar that you can do here in Kent with your family. I'm launching a series, a riveting series called Dining With Derek. And that is going to be more of an internal side. It's going to be a once a month kind of brown bag lunch. Derek on a webcam, talking about what's happening in the city, just making sure our employees are informed and they feel engaged. They're allowed to ask the CIO any question they want and really get their questions answered and feel that they're engaged and connected. It's part of our internal communication strategy to make sure that our employees feel educated, engaged, so they can produce an educated and engaged outcome for the public. And so I'm excited to do that. He'll have guest speakers or guests come join him for his brown bag lunch occasionally. I want to aim for Wednesday because if you know Derek, you know Wednesday is his wing stop day. So I want to see them just eat messy wings and talk to, talk to employees. But the first one we're going to talk about is how the Council's budget and Mayor's budget is, impacts employees and what that means for programs and services. So his first guest is going to be Finance Director Paula Painter. And they're going to bring their brown bag lunch and just talk through the budget and what it means. And then this one I'm really excited about, I've signed you all up for this and nobody knows. We're doing Coffee with the Council. I, I really in 2021 been focused on how do I give more opportunities for the public to get to know their city council? And so Coffee with the Council is one of the things we're going to be doing. We're going to feature one council member a month. It's going to be kind of like an open town hall. You get to come have a cup of coffee. We might provide some treats if you're lucky that week or that month or whatever it is. And just allow our residents to have an open forum. I'd love to do these in person. In the era of COVID, we'll start online and then when we get out of COVID, we'll do them in person. And when we do them in person, we'll rotate geographically throughout the city, what coffee shops and areas we're at, facilities we're at. But it's going to be a great way for Council to get to meet the public and talk to the public about the issues that are important to them. And it lets staff facilitate that. So you don't even have to worry about anything. You can come show up and have a cup of coffee and hear from residents directly. The other one that's not on there that should be on there is if you were on Council a while ago, you saw a video series that was launched about each council member and why they chose to call Kent home and why they ran for council and what issues they're passionate about. We're going to be launching that again to really reintroduce our council to the public. It's hard with COVID because we're so disconnected. So we really want to. I see that. Okay. Sorry, I saw your comment, Councilmember Cor, and I'm almost wrapped, so then I'll take your question. But we really want to reintroduce Council to the public. So we'll be doing that reintroduction video series and we'll let you pick your favorite spot and Kent will come to you and film. And then the last thing that I wanted to mention that's not on there is now that everyone's bio is updated on the website, I'm going to be taking bits and pieces of your bio and integrating that into our social, our social platforms to say, did you know Councilmember Michelle has a digital background at every park for every Zoom meeting? Just fun things out of your bio, just so people can really get to know you all and ask questions and just learn fun facts about you and your families and what you all enjoy doing. Next slide, please. I swear we're almost done. Again, these are the new systems we're going to be implementing. We're doing the CMS website update for our external website in quarter one. We'll launch that project. Binder is the digital asset management system that Council approved in the budget. That's going to take off at the end of quarter two, beginning of quarter three. Sprout Social Media is already underway in legal review, so that'll launch in quarter one. We're launching service level agreements with all of our departments, just so there's a clear expectation and understanding about turnaround times. It's more of an internal service document, so we can be productive for them. And Ivanti is the digital ticketing system I talked about internally. We're making improvements to that in quarter one. Next slide, please. Oh my gosh, we've reached that point in time and I see plenty of hands. So Council President, I turn it back to you.
Thank you. Just for the amount of time we've got, let's try to get through this piece quickly so we can get to our other presentations. But I want to make sure everybody gets our questions answered. So I will start with Councilmember Cor.
Thank you. Thank you, Bailey, for great information and presentation. First, I have a question about the, the social series slide. Great ideas, very aspirational, but are they sustainable? Like we usually have great ideas that we start with, right? But they end up dying after maybe a couple of series and nobody sees or hears about it. So what are the goals? Like what, how long are you planning on doing Cuisines of Kent or People of Kent? And do you have goals of like how many people a year or is it going to be just a, you know, like until March and then we forget about it?
Yeah, no, that's a great question, Councilmember. So what we've done is because we've transitioned to Sprout, our new social media platform you guys helped us get, we can do a lot of pre-scheduling in that tool. So for example, Cuisines of Kent, we're actually photographing 26 different restaurants in one day. So that's 26 weeks worth of content, which is half the year. So we're going to have a couple of planning days where we go through and pre-fotograph all these things and pre-interview people. And we'll load that up and we actually plan by the middle of February to have enough content for the rest of the year done. So it'll at least be guaranteed the first year. We'll see what the reception is from the public. But we plan to keep it up throughout, throughout the biennium. But we'll have the content for the entire year done by the middle of February.
Okay, so it's a long-term thing. It's not like we do it short-term and then by November, we've forgotten about it.
Absolutely.
And People of Kent, is it, can community members reach out to someone if they have somebody to be featured or?
Yeah, if they've got a great story or interesting story, please, by all means, you can direct message us on any of our social media platforms and just say, hey, we've got a cool story. We'd love it. The more the merrier. This actually is kind of a copycat from a series called Humans of New York, where they just pick random folks off the street, do a black and white photo and tell their story. But if somebody's got a story, please, by all means, on any of our social media platforms, Twitter, Instagram, Facebook, send us a direct message. We'd be happy.
And I just had feedback, thank you, and feedback on just going back to our COVID mailers. Feedback from community members was we had, when we sent the mailers, we had a huge picture of Mayor or council members, but the translation was like really, really small. People could not see it. And the other feedback was related to the masks. Some of the diverse communities felt like they were not featured in the masks because we had masks about Jeep, we had masks about, you know, winter Wonderland, very pretty to look at. But being a diverse community that we are, we did not have masks that featured the community. You know, for example, one of the, one of the individuals said, you know, they would have loved to see African print on their masks because, you know, they would love to see their culture somehow represented and, you know, being featured. So something to keep in mind, you know, we are a diverse community. We keep saying that. We need to do more, you know, being more actionable when not just to say it that we're the diverse community. So keeping that in mind, please.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. We tried to keep them fairly neutral as far as just scenery, but I actually think that's a great idea. We're kind of on hold with mask ordering until hopefully a federal COVID package impacts local governments again. Because that's where we got that funding. But I think that would be totally fun to do something that represents the cultures of Kent. I think that'd be really cool.
That was all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Councilmember Cor. Councilmember Voice followed by Fincher.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, Bailey, outstanding job. I just want to make a comment and I think at the time, candidate Ra... at the time, candidate Raff and council Raff, we came on the city council at the same time. And I think one thing that I noticed that was missing within the city is communication, because we could not tell our own story. Everybody was telling our story. Our I T department was kind of put together a bubble gun induct date. Then our Parks Department was really not what it should be. So I think on a scale of one to four, I think I can check the communication off my list. I think you are, you nailing it. You're doing a good job, a phenomenal job of just telling what's going on in Kent. I think Councilmember Cor, good suggestion. I think Bailey, open to those and make some improvement. I totally agree with you. We are a diverse community. We need to reflect that. But Bailey, really, you got some good stuff going on. I want to thank you and your team for all the good work that you guys have done. And then I think, in my opinion, I mean, I T on a scale of one to four, we're about a three. Parks are about a three, so we still have some work to do with Parks and I T to kind of get them on a level four. But I can check you off my list, Bailey. Outstanding job. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember. I have to say, like you said, it's all my team. I promise they make me look way better than I am. And yeah, it's all my team. I appreciate that. Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Fincher, go ahead.
Thank you. Bailey, I just wanted to also add on their great presentation. I like seeing everything in one, in one place. You know, I was at the State of the City address, but I forgot. You know, that was not forefront of my mind. So it's nice seeing all of that, seeing the number of people there, because I never knew how many people. I know it's a room full of people, but I didn't know how many people. And I know that's by far, you know, far outpaces the number of people that I've seen at our addresses in the past. So great job. I like seeing everything, but I'm really happy about the, the additional languages. I'm still singing that same song about having everything out there and the multiple languages, so all of our folks can read it. So I'm glad to see the work that has been on that and has been done on that and that you have planned for 2021 as far as the documents, the mailings, the ads and everything else. I like Kent-ertainment and some of the other things that are listed. So, good job.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I have to tell you, you'll be even more pleased to know the mayor and I were on a call with a vendor last week that can do real-time captioning in up to a hundred languages on top of our videos. So not only on mailings and the, the static documents, but we'd actually be able to do real-time captioning in a hundred languages of all of our council meetings, of all of our workshops, cow. So we're, we're excited. The mayor's been pushing forward on that, and we're really excited to see what we can come up with here for you.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. When I was thinking about it, I was just hoping for English for the captioning. But I am so glad that we can get it done in multiple languages and you'll have to tell me later if people will just simply select that and how that's going to work. But thank you, because that way the people of Kent will be able to listen and follow along with what's going on in the city and seeing so many great things that are going on in the city. They'll know that they're a part of it and are able to take part. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Councilmember Almer.
Thank you. Again, Bailey, like whatever, everyone said, great job. I mean, just, you know, I love a good strategy, so I'm excited to see that we're going to have a good, solid foundation to build on and build our initiatives to work towards. You just told my vendor, I was going to ask about real-time captioning and the technologies that I know are out there. So I'm really excited about that, because as we move towards a more visual presentation, I think it's, it's great. I mean, pictures alone can cross a lot of language barriers. But we do have to remember, like, you know, the real-time captioning, and you answered my question. So thank you for that. And then I just also wanted to say I love the series about the, okay, I like Sunday Fun Day myself, but I do like the Kent-ertainment. And we recently, my family learned about the Disc Golf, because we signed my son up for, next week he starts the, through the Parks Department, the Disc Golf classes or something. And I honestly think my husband is more excited about those than my son. So yeah, so I think that's going to be great, and I look forward to bringing more awareness to those little hidden gems in Kent. So thank you for that.
There's so many cool, fun little spots in Kent that people just don't know about. And Parks has got a whole list of, it's a treasure trove. And so I want to focus on low-cost or free events for families to be able to do on the weekends together with each other and really build that community and be a strong, healthy family here in Kent. And the real-time captioning was, to be honest, it was all the mayor. She found this vendor and they were, let's do a presentation. And I thought it was too good to be true, and I watched their presentation. I've asked them a million questions, up, down, side to side, and it looks like we've got a real deal here. So I'm really looking forward to working with them to make it a reality. Thank you.
Councilmember Fincher, you still have your hand raised. Did you have anything else? Councilmember, you are on mute.
I know that you have a, a Disc Golf phenom on your staff. I was just wondering if as you're going about the parks, will we actually see demos of some of the sports and all that have, that are set up as special features for that park, such as Disc Golf players, you know, your staff member and others in the city who might excel at playing Disc Golf, showing how that's done there, or if they're down at Kent Memorial Park, we have the Whipple Ball, maybe something demonstrating that. Is that part of your plan?
It is. Shout out to Steve, our Disc Golf junkie here at Kent on my team. He loves Disc Golf. But yes, we're going to try to show some examples from people in the community who already use those things to show people how it's done and show them, you know, what they need to do it, or if all the equipment's there and how it's done and where they can find those things. So we want it to be a holistic, inclusive guide for, for, I'm going to just keep calling it Sunday Fun Day, but for your Sunday Fun Day or Kent-ertainment on the weekend. So yeah, so we'll include those things.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Excellent presentation, Bailey. And I, I do like that, seeing everything all in one place. I know we do that during the retreat where we all talk about this past year and things that, that happened that we are proud of and that we like to see, and you summed it all up right there. So, great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council President.
All right, we are going to move on. We have run over quite a bit in our agenda. So I'm going to welcome Haley Bond Steel. I know she's got a presentation on Kent Housing Options Plan. Haley, I know you talk super fast, so I'm going to go ahead and let you get started. Let's give it till, you know, quarter after six twenty-five and see where we are as far as moving, moving on in the rest of our agenda.
Thank you, Council President, and good evening, everyone. We will do our best. Both Kayleen and myself are quick speakers. So Kim, why don't you go ahead and just jump us into our first slide? What we want to talk about tonight, you may recall, of course, our Kent Housing Options Plan is going to have a lot of different components. And we talked to you recently about highlighting in all of those policy areas. But we realized that there's one policy area that really has a ton of meat to it, a ton of details. And we wanted to talk through some of those details with you today, rather than, you know, moving forward with something at a high level right up until the last moment. So you may remember this slide from our last presentation. We wanted to start here because what we want to talk about today is one strategy that addresses an aspect of the problem with housing affordability, which is overall supply. So for anybody who follows the shoe, you likely know, but that tension is a component, and it's one that we do have some control over. So we want to discuss tonight some possible ways that we can ease supply restrictions today. So this graph was just a sort of reminder of, you know, that our population grows at a rate that our housing permits don't keep up with, and that is a problem. However, if we go to the next slide, we can also be cognizant of the fact that just increasing the number of units won't solve the issue if like every single unit that's built is a mansion or a tiny apartment. You know, we really need variety. So what we want to talk about tonight is this idea of missing middle housing. And that's a term that was coined by some planning firm for housing that is somewhere between a single-family detached home and an apartment building. And that's between is both in terms of density, number of people housed per square foot of land, and also ideally, income affordability. And that, that's not always a one-to-one, but it is a part of the story. So middle housing is not a new concept. You know, before World War II, neighborhoods contained a heavier mix of housing types in general, including here in Kent. Kayleen has an example or two from Kent. But it was really only with the invention of highways and the explosion of suburbs that single-family housing really began to dominate the market. So next slide, and then I'll turn it over to Kayleen. You know, how do we get more diversity? How do we get more of that missing middle? The first step to changing what is built is to, you know, examine what we currently allow, what we would like to allow, and address some barriers in our code. And so that's what Kayleen's going to walk you through this evening. So we've really been examining, I mean, I've got to hand it to Kayleen. She's really got a detailed view of this. So we've got a lot to throw at you in the next few slides. There's just a lot of different actions we could take. So with that kind of range of possibility, what we want to do tonight is to kind of take the council's temperature on how significant the actions taken should be. And we have recommendations, but we are very open to your input. Of course, as a reminder, you know, these regulations don't guarantee any particular development. Market factors, that, that bottom line, those really encompass quite a bit. There are just so many things that we ended the decision of whether a building project is worth the investment. So in this case, what we're going to talk about tonight, our job is kind of like getting out of the way of the things that we want to see happen. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kayleen to go into the details.
All right, so next slide for us, Kim. So first off, kind of some benefits of middle housing. By allowing more variety of housing types in single-family neighborhoods, even strategically in locations like along transit corridors or on corner lots, we can provide opportunities for a much wider range of residents to be able to live in single-family neighborhoods who might not have been able to before. This includes everything from aging in place, new couples, multi-generational houses, in neighborhoods where you've got, you know, grandma lives in the backyard or in an A D U. This slows the displacement of our multifamily neighborhoods, or of our single-family neighborhoods. And it's the ability to kind of just make sure that middle housing is available for everyone. We're going to really focus on options a lot here. Next slide, please, Kim. So Haley alluded to this, this middle in Kent. I did a lot of research, pulling all of our permit data from the last ten years. We have not permitted a lot of middle housing types. Less than four percent of all of our building permits in the last ten years are A D Us, duplexes, or townhomes, which is very small. The neighborhood that she was alluding to is actually behind Shower Center. If you look along Fourth Avenue North there, on the, going northbound on the right-hand side, is integrated, a mix of duplexes with some single-family homes, and there's a couple of A D Us in that neighborhood, and some fourplexes on the other side of the street. So it's a very, that's actually a great example of a neighborhood that was built more in the early nineties that has a variety and a mix of those youth types. So that's just a good example. And what we're going to do now is the next slides will kind of break down the more common middle housing types we see and what we could do to achieve those. So first, we're going to talk about duplex and triplex. Just kind of the lay of the land, so you know what is and is not allowed in single-family neighborhoods. They are technically allowed in single-family neighborhoods, but with restrictions that would make it impossible to be built in any sort of infill development capacity. What that means is you need to be building a subdivision or a short plat of eight lots or more to be able to build one duplex. That's pretty unfeasible, given the amount of land we have left. So while technically allowed, they're not going to be built. The other kind of small hurdle to mention is that duplexes are looked at more like single-family for purposes of our design regulations and open space regulations, but triplexes are viewed more as multifamily. The reason why that's a problem is, is that there are more requirements for multifamily, and it's likely that a triplex isn't going to pencil with the amount of stuff we'll make a developer do. So just to kind of lay of the land. Next slide, Kim. So this slide, how we've broken this down is kind of what we did first was we did research of all of the other cities that are doing middle housing type regulations. You've probably heard about Portland in the news. Kirkland's got some really cool codes. And any of the cities that did the Sochio work with us in South King County are also looking into middle. So Burien's got a draft housing plan. Lots of good things to pull from. Basically, on the, on the left-hand side, we kind of have a what to allow with the highlighted area being where staff feels we might fit most easily with the least amount of change, but also being able to make the most amount of, most amount of movement. So as we learned from just the duplex and triplex conversation, just because we allow something to be built doesn't mean it's going to be built. Market factors play a huge role in whether or not something's actually going to be developed in Kent. So that's what the right-hand side of this graph or this chart talks about, is all of the considerations that we as staff will need to make in order to implement any of the options on the left-hand side. So staff recommendations for duplexes and triplexes are going to be to look into allowing duplexes and triplexes in all single-family zones, while reviewing the current limitations for density, lot size, parking, and then adjust them as necessary. This could be really great for us to lower the entry barrier for homeownership in single-family neighborhoods, while also maintaining a single-family scale and appearance of homes. So we believe that this is where we should prioritize a lot of our code effort moving forward, and we want K HOP to clearly point to duplexes and triplexes as a separate type of middle housing type. Next slide, Kim. So next unit type. I'm sorry, I know I'm talking a little fast, but I want to get through all of the materials so you guys can, we can talk about it. So the next housing type of middle housing is, is four to six unit developments. As you can see from the photos here, these look dramatically different, depending on what the developer builds and what's allowed. So most of them having a significantly larger footprint than a regular single-family home. Some cities like Olympia in particular have taken a more zone-by-zone approach or a site-by-site approach. In the bottom right-hand photo, you'll see there is actually a cottage development in Kirkland. So it, it might benefit us instead of to just looking at four to six unit developments, to look at specific types of four to six unit developments, and then along thoroughfares or adjacent to high-capacity transit, instead of looking at a little more piece-by-piece approach as to where these would best fit. So let's move to the next slide, and we'll discuss a little bit about what some of those changes could look like. So we have a lot more options here. We have a lot of options for all of them. But in the what to allow category, we're recommending that we explore integrating specific a four to six unit types, like townhomes and cottages, and allowing them in most single-family zones. So we might get a little more granular by the time we come to you with, with code recommendations as to which types of zones would allow these, or on corner lots within a certain proximity to transit lines, like a quarter mile or a half mile. A lot of data for us to collect to continue to make that specific of a recommendation. But the other thing that we would like to look into is to expand low-density multifamily zones along arterials and proximity to transit. Through a lot of the research I did, I noticed that a lot of cities just have more multifamily zoning than, instead of only just changing single-family zoning, looking at where more multifamily could go. But that would also make sure, but we would look into our multifamily codes and align them with what we'd really like to see, to make sure that we don't have any, anything that's preventative of development, like excessive design regulations or open space regulations.
Kayleen, I've got a couple of councilmembers with their hands raised.
Yeah.
For Almer, do you have a question now, or do you want to wait? Oh, you're muted. Okay, Councilmember Cor, did you want to ask your question now or wait till the end of the presentation?
I can wait. It might get in. Thank you.
Perfect.
I've got one more housing type to go through too, and a couple of other things. So these ones essentially, there's a lot more unknown, or a lot of things we'd have to address as along the lines of actual capacity in single-family neighborhoods. How wide are the roads? Do they have sidewalks? Things that, parking is a big one with this, and whether or not the structures themselves have built-in parking, like townhomes, or if they'd need surface-level lots, which we don't have a lot of large parcels left for surface-level lots. So there are a lot of pieces for us to consider for this one. And next slide, Kim. So then, lastly of the unit types, we're going to talk about accessory dwelling units. So these are, we're lovingly referring to them as middle-ish. They're not exactly middle housing, but they have a lot of the same aspects that middle housing would help us with, which is the slower densification of neighborhoods in ways that can fit in a little bit better. The focus on A D Us has been huge for the last couple of years. I know that you're probably all aware of Renton just recently up doing, doing their A D U codes. Burien has updated theirs as well. So it's something that's caught the attention of local policymakers. Kind of just the lay of the land for us in, in A D Us in Kent is that we do allow them by, as a, as a attached or detached. And you can have them on any single-family lot in the city of Kent. They just have size limitations, height limitations, and design limitations. So the size limitations are thirty-three percent of the primary structure or forty percent, depending on the city. depending on the situation. And we'll talk on the next slide as to why that's kind of an issue for these. But the detached ADUs take the form of like small cottages or above garages. And attached ADUs, as you can see on the little chart here, are either in addition to or like in the basement. So we do allow them. Perfect. Thank you, Kim. So we think that there's a lot of opportunity for us here with ADUs to look at them a little bit more than just a backyard cottage. However, in the last 10 years, we've permitted less than 20 of them total. So there's something, there's kind of, you know, not jiving with what our code allows versus what the market's looking for. I've been a counter planner in Kent for a couple of years now, and I can tell you that we get a lot of inquiries about building ADUs and very few permits come back in for them. And the way that that conversation goes is they will ask us how big an ADU they can build and the math works out to a unit that's 200 or 300 square feet. Because our housing stock in Kent is old. We've got a lot of ramblers that are 700, 800 square feet. They're 13 feet tall. So then that leads to issues with the math working out for people to be able to build anything. And then once you figure out how expensive they are to build, having hiring an architect and all the professionals you need to design the plans. They just don't have the capital. So we can't address whether or not someone has the capital necessarily without a lot more other kinds of human services oriented things in play. But as far as the code itself, we can change what is prohibitive for people to build ADUs. So our recommendations are going to be to allow larger ADUs than we allow right now and not tie the size of the ADU to the main structure or the height of the ADU to the main structure. Given our older housing stock, that is essentially prohibitive of them being designed. There's a lot of possibilities for these two to get even further than that. That are, you know, Kirkland is allowing two ADUs per lot. So is Burien. Things about owner occupancy and parking. There's a lot of of possibility here. So speaking of kind of what I've been hearing over the counter, also what I've been hearing in our outreach efforts. So next slide, Kim. Did, oh, there we go. Perfect. So we've been doing our outreach since October and I've gotten a lot of feedback about the things that have made it into this PowerPoint slide, this PowerPoint presentation today. A lot of feedback about design requirements, permitting requirements, things being too difficult. We've heard from 266 people as of today. A huge percent of them being single family homeowners, but actually less than I anticipated. I'm I was excited about how many renters we were able to get to. Through doing the fly ring through, I actually hand delivered postcards to a bunch of the King County Housing Authority properties. And I think I got some great responses that way. But essentially, the top four choices we heard for being able to house everyone were small cottages, townhomes, ADUs and duplexes and triplexes. And it was overwhelmingly so. So that's another reason why we've kind of focused on those smaller housing types in our recommendations to you today. But of course, we'll be wanting to chat with you, engage how we can mold this and where we can go. So on that, I will hand it back over to Haley for our last slide. Kim, please. Thank you.
Thank you. So yeah, I I think, you know, there's obviously a ton of opportunity here. And what I want to just lay out for the council very briefly before we discuss and and answer your questions is sort of a what is going to be in K hop versus what is a project for after that. So basically, what we really want K hop to do is to point in the direction that everyone agrees is the right direction. And then Kayleen and I will come back to council with a code amendment project and including a lot more community outreach, because there's a lot of these little detailed decisions that can make a big difference in terms of the actual development that, you know, how it looks and feels in a community. And so we're not going to be necessarily making very strong decisions within the K hop document. What we want to be doing is laying the policy orientation so that our code amendments can then flow from that. So what that means is that we want to be really aligned as a community. I think the feedback we've heard that Kayleen has done such a good job of getting from the public combined with these conversations with council and leadership, we really want to try to align all of those different threads and make sure that K hop as a whole says, okay, here are going to be our immediate next steps. And then here's the medium and longer term. So immediate, we think that there is a lot of possibility for duplexes and triplexes. There's a lot of possibility for ADUs and kind of for different reasons. ADUs, we've got some low hanging fruit regulations. We know exactly what to change because we've had so much counter interest that has not gone anywhere. Duplexes and triplexes, it's more that we see them as a very incremental over time. Something we can get out of the way of and let it happen as it's going to happen. Again, using a lot of our regulations that exist for single family and just sort of tweaking them to fit these other types better. In the medium term, I think cottages and townhomes have a little bit of potential. That would be something that wouldn't happen this year or maybe even next, but you know, potentially in the kind of middle, middle term there. And then other larger four to six unit development types. You know, I think we're getting the sense that the community isn't really ready and particularly the infrastructure is just not there. So when we see a lot more bus service, when we see a lot better access to transit, I think we can start considering some of those types that are, you know, they're just going to have a parking impact that we cannot accommodate right now. So that is our thought, but I would really love to open it up and chat with council for as much time as we have available about, you know, this prioritization that staff is recommending and any of the details that you want to make sure are captured in terms of the policy direction within the K hop document. So thank you, and I'll leave it to council president to shepherd us through a discussion.
Thank you so much, Haley and Kayleen. Great job getting through those slides very quickly. That gives us about 10 minutes to ask questions. And then I know that you will be coming back to us soon to continue this discussion. I am going to start with Councilmember Core, followed by Voice, Fincher, then Larmor.
Thank you. Thank you, Haley. My question is about, is there interest in development community for duplexes and triplexes? I know we're still working on the plan, but just kind of looking at it in in the future, because I know we used to have some type of code to allow cottages, but it never happened in Kent.
Right.
So do we sort of have any idea?
It's a great question. And here's what I'll say. I believe this is my sort of theory. I believe that the single family home builders will increasingly have to shift to duplexes and triplexes as the urban growth area within King County and adjacent areas is increasingly built out. So I think we are starting to see an interest change. You know, developers want to do what's safe. Duplexes and triplexes are still a little bit cutting edge, even though, of course, they've existed for 50 years. You know, the 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 master builders of the world have really honed in their single family regulations. So they're going to always say that that's the first thing they want to do. And they're not going to necessarily knock down our door to do duplexes. However, I do really see that the whole region is shifting this direction. They are going to have to adjust. And that's sort of what I meant at the beginning about getting out of the way of it. I don't know that we will see a whole bunch of duplexes sprouting up, which is why it's worth it to just kind of get the regs where they need to be. And, you know, then we can focus on other things and allow them to come in over time. So that's a little bit of a non-answer because, you know, basically developers, depending on what room you're in, will sort of advocate for whatever is easiest for them. And so they're not necessarily going to say, yeah, okay, let's come up with an entirely new product type and we'll orient our business around that. However, I think the writing is on the wall that they will have to, particularly single family home builders who it's really a similar type. I mean, all they have to do is, you know, sort of adjust their firewalls and adjust their entrances. And you've got you know, really similar kind of construction. So it's not like a different skill set. So my anticipation is that we will see more of them. This will not be a demonstration ordinance, the way the cottages were. It will be more of a, you know, we are ready whenever the development community is ready.
Thank you. And my other basically just feedback is on the outreach that we're doing that, you know, we're reaching out to diverse communities and we're reaching out to individuals in various languages. I don't know how your team is already doing that. So just kind of keeping that in mind. And thank you.
Yes, thank you. And Kayleen has been doing a fantastic job of that. I know she's spoken with you offline about it. So I think we're always ready to incorporate more suggestions, but we're feeling pretty good considering COVID, of course, about how well we're reaching our community.
Thank you, Councilmember Voice.
Thank you, Madam President. Hey, I'll say it in our team. In my opinion, all these are important, right? I think in my mind, I missed it. So I think the most important thing is but is the the coding and the zoning, right? So where will we actually allow the particular place to reside, right? I think as we, you know, we are changing from a community standpoint where people want different things and that we need to be able to allow them, if they want to be in a duplex or townhouse or ADU or cottage, we need to be able to have zoning and our code to accommodate that. So you didn't talk too much about it unless I miss it. But I think for me, I like all of these here. The important thing with Robbie hit the road, in my opinion, just where we allow a D type of places to be.
Yeah, thank you for that, Councilmember. I think we were trying to touch on that with some of our considerations related to, you know, like allowing them in most zones. For instance, what we mean there is most single family zones, which is a lot of Kent. We are thinking about sort of opening up to these types of smaller missing middle housing types. So I think the details of exactly where and exactly how, you're right, that is still to come. And we will be coming back to council with that after the K hop plan is actually complete. So we won't be actually changing any of the zoning with the adoption of K hop, but we want to point ourselves in the direction, make sure we're all aligned so that we can change the zoning pretty quickly afterwards. It'll be like our first steps of implementing the plan.
I like the variety, the writing, a lot of diversity. So all these will be good. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you. I also like the variety. I think that that's that will go a long way in helping solve our housing, our housing problems. Would you go back one slide? I wanted some clarification on the 57% what only some design amenity requirements. Can you tell me a little bit more about that box?
I can take this one, Haley. Yes, sorry. I was trying to go so fast that so I could get you guys to to it. I kind of skimmed over that one. So one of the, the way we phrase the questions on the survey is is we really wanted to make sure that people understood that there was kind of a nexus between what we required and then affordability ish of of what would be built. And kind of if people could choose having us have the highest amount of design requirements might result in buildings that are more expensive and housing units that are more expensive. Or having the lowest amount of design requirements might result in buildings that aren't super attractive and aren't very nice, but might be cheaper. And then there's this kind of middle, which we feel we really kind of already are at, which is that design requirements directly translate to how much a developer is going to spend to make that unit meet our standards and that price will translate on to the consumer. So if we have a lot of requirements for special materials that cost a lot of money or different roof pitches or things that are more difficult to build, we're just pushing that on to the the consumer at the end of the day for the price of the housing unit essentially. And so if we want to be in the middle, we could be, we could be a little more lax on some of our design requirements that we that are past well intentioned, of course, but have these negative consequences we maybe not had thought of in the past. Does that, does that answer?
That is a very good answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Larmor, followed by Michelle.
Thank you, Council President. So Haley, you know, we've had these discussions in the housing council committee and stuff, but I'm a huge fan of this this middle type of housing. In my twenties, I actually had the pleasure of living in a cottage community that backed up to a a townhouse community and we had a connected lawn and we were like right in the middle actually of single family residence. And it built an amazing sense of community, not just in our unit, but we ended up like adopting like the little 80 year old lady that lived in the single family house next to the the complex. We were able to kind of keep an eye on her and invite her over for barbecues. And so there's a real sense of community that I think is sometimes lost when you when you have that middle housing type, either too separated from the other types, or you just don't have it in your community. So super excited to see us taking this on and removing some of the barriers to development. And on that note, knowing that we have only 4% of this currently in our city, how do you envision, I guess, sort of getting the word out or promoting to the development community that, you know, we if we make this easier to develop these in Kent, how do we sort of put ourselves on the map for like, hey, you know, this is now something that we are more welcoming and more apt to to help you build in Kent. What's sort of the the long range plan to communicate that with the development community?
That's a great question, Councilmember Larmor. And it really speaks to the need for relationship building between the city and the other stakeholders and players in the development process. So we don't have one position that is tasked with, you know, getting to know every developer and kind of having conversations with them. Now, obviously, our economic development folks have some relationships with development, the development community, and I've generally relied on them. And, you know, Bill and his team have been fantastic to help sort of connect my high level policy stuff with some of the more project focused questions that matter. But I do think there is fundamentally a bit of a disconnect there. And so one of the policies that we're trying to flesh out in K hop is how to strengthen those relationships. Now, I'm a part of a few groups such as the South King County Planners and Developers Forum. That's a very particular group of developers because it's run through a housing development consortium. So my goal would be to probably find some more groups like that and or start more groups like that. We really have momentum with Sochio to you know, try to be telling a more unified story about all of South King County because we're all in a similar boat on this. Most of the other of our neighboring cities also, you know, struggle to attract this middle housing typology. And I think, you know, it's really past time that we form stronger relationships in the development community so that we can tell those stories. So that's the answer on some of the duplex and triplex, triplex types. I will say with ADUs, these are more likely to be homeowners. And so, you know, existing homeowners, what we really need to do there is a lot more education. And one recommendation was to do sort of workshops because one of the big limitations to building ADUs is access to capital. And so some cities have taken on a very proactive role of kind of facilitating conversations between potential lenders, homeowners and the, you know, sort of planning team to say, okay, you know, you, if you can get a loan like this, here's how you can meet different regulations. And so that's something that I think there's interest in skip potentially running. I'm not, I don't think that that our staff is going to have the capacity to do that in the short term, but it might be something to shoot for if there's interest of really trying to connect homeowners to a little bit more information because it is just a lot to take on a development project if you're just trying to build a little cottage in the backyard. And it turns out there's like a lot more to it than you might realize. And getting the funding is really challenging. So if council is interested in ADUs being a really high priority, we could try to front load that compared to some of the other projects. I think that, you know, in general, the access to capital is a real limitation that we fundamentally can't really do much about beyond try to make connections where we do know of resources. So that in that one, we have a little less control over, I think, than potentially, you know, building more of those relationships within the development community. I see that, I guess, as having a little bit higher potential. But if homeowners are able to build those ADUs, that also really builds inter, you know, generational wealth for folks who do have property in Kent. And so we want to support that if we can. So it's a, it's a really good question. And I think it speaks to the need for a lot more really robust relationship building in a lot of different directions for our group.
Great. Well, thank you, Haley. And let us know on council, like how we can support that effort. Support your team.
Thank you.
And then Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Council President. Haley, thanks for the presentation. Can we go back to the slide with the ADUs? Yes, that one. Okay, so are there lot requirements? Do you know what they are?
I can answer that. So there are a lot of compounding regulations on ADUs. So there's not a minimum lot size, but there is a maximum lot percentage for a detached ADU and it's 15% of the lot size. So that is for all accessory structures. So that if you've got a shed, a detached garage and an ADU, those all total up to your maximum 15% allowed for detached structures. So that's pretty prohibitive. There's not a minimum or minimum lot size for ADUs, though.
Okay. And then what's the parking requirement?
One per grade. The you have to have one stall, which is this is something I didn't get into in the code specifics for the duplex, triplex, but one of the low hanging fruits of our code is is that we actually do not technically allow any garages to count towards parking stalls, only this, the perking pad in front, which is quite prohibitive because if you have a garage with the parking pad in front of it, that means you technically only have two parking stalls. So in order to build an ADU, you would need to construct one more parking stall, which is also impervious surface. There's limits with the width of your access point. There's a lot of issues with that. So if we allow them to count their garage, then now they have four. And so every house would default have the ADU parking spot that's required. There's also some possible legislation for removing parking requirements for ADUs in their entirety. So I think either way, we will get we'd like to get at a place where that's not an issue, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and there actually has already been legislation that has passed that required that ADUs within, I think it's a quarter mile, but it might be a half mile of transit cannot be required to have parking. And our code hasn't actually even caught up to that. So the state legislature is definitely interested in that parking requirement for ADUs.
Thank you, Haley. Thank you, Haley.
All right. I think most everyone at least got a question or two asked. So we are going to wrap this portion up. Haley, when do we expect to have you back?
Oh, I don't have it in front of me, but I know it's soon. I put myself on the calendar several times, so we'll be seeing you, if not in February, then certainly in March.
Okay. And do we give you some direction here as you move forward?
I think so. I think I'm hearing a lot of openness to these types of housing, and we will proceed with that direction and, and come back to you with some more details.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Sorry to rush you, but we are going to go ahead and move on in the agenda. Item number three, we've got Kelly Peterson joining us and then also Matt Gilbert. Kelly, I know there's been some conversation going back and forth. If you do not mind, we would go ahead and move you to a future presentation just to allow us to get through workshop and allow council members a little bit of time in between that and council. So we're going to go ahead and postpone that if that's okay.
Yes, no problem. Thank you. I look forward to presenting to you.
Thank you very much for accommodating that. And then Matt Gilbert, we're going to give you about five minutes if you want to show some of your slides on the downtown parking garage. And we'll go from there.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We just have a couple. I was going to rush through this, but I appreciate a little bit more time and, and thanks, Kelly, for being flexible. So I'm, obviously, we have the two big sound, sound transit projects in the city, the Link Light Rail, which gets most of the attention. But this downtown garage has been in the works for many years now, and it's, it's moving very slowly right now. So I just wanted to reacquaint the council with that and then give you the, the quick update on status. So formerly called the Kent Sounder Station Parking and Access Improvements Project, which is a mouthful, so I call it the Downtown Sounder Garage. This is a 534-stall garage that will also include local bus layover improvements as well as pedestrian improvements around the area and some traffic mitigation to support the increased in and outflow there. So as you'll recall, this was part of the ST2 plan from way back in 2008. That plan gave a window between 2009 and 2023 to build the projects that were in that plan. And so we're obviously pushing right up against the end of that. And so it's, I think it's high time for this project to be moving forward, and it is. So in January of 2020, you may recall that the city and Sound Transit conceptually agreed or signed an MOU to identify this Washington cold storage site as the location of that garage, and that's highlighted in yellow for you. So it's, they did, Sound Transit did some value engineering even before COVID, and they're trying to save some of their administrative costs by linking the planning, procurement, and construction timelines together of the Kent garage together with the similar project in Auburn and Sumner. So that's, and that's, there's a little bit of like regional connectivity there. So if you could go to the next slide, please, Kim. So the current status here is that this project, along with most other projects on the Sounder system, were paused when COVID started. Sound Transit, obviously, is facing a lot of uncertainty. And except for the Puyallup Garage, which was under construction, everything, everything took a pause. And then in September of 2020, the board allowed most of the projects on the Sounder line to move forward, albeit very slowly. And so in the case of Kent, Auburn, Sumner, they've allowed a project management group to start preparing the, the documents and, and requirements to go out to bid to a contractor. So it's, it's, they call it like pre-procurement of a contractor. So it, it's a baby step forward, but it is, it is, it is moving. So in addition to that work, Sound Transit's continuing to negotiate a development agreement that kind of sets the terms of the project in more detail with the city. So we've been trading iterations of that for quite some time, and we're, we're continuing to do that. So next slide, please, Kim. It's important to note that there are some, this changing landscape, obviously with COVID and our economy, that, that Sound Transit is facing. They've announced that they have system-wide project costs that have really increased due to rising real estate costs related to right-of-way as well as construction costs in our very hot Puget Sound real estate market. In addition to that, they've got related revenue declines from COVID that, you know, on their, on their fares and on their tax collection, but it's pressuring their finances. So right now, Sound Transit is considering, you know, how these, how all this will affect their, their, their ability to continue to do projects. It's, it's, and they, they really project out a long ways. And so they have to think about, about the implications of this for decades out. So at this point, they're assuming throughout their system and all their projects that they're looking for cost savings. So this is something that we're monitoring closely, and we're waiting to hear from them how it may affect this project as well as, as well as others in the region. And so that's something they're looking closely at and we're staying in touch with. So that's all I have to share, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Matt. Questions for Matt? I see a couple of hands raised. I'm not sure, Councilmember Fincher and Larmor, did you have questions or those from the previous presentation? Okay. All right. I don't see any hands raised. Matt, I appreciate that information. I would imagine we will be hearing more about this as it develops.
I agree. Thank you.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you so much. That brings us now to the end of our workshop, and we only went over a couple of minutes after all of that moving things around. So I appreciate everyone joining us this evening. We're going to take a little pause and come back at 7 o'clock for council. Thank you so much. We are adjourned.